Thank you folks for coming. We're gonna open up the meeting with public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to... if there is, can you come up here and join us?
Yes, I can.
You're welcome. Just for the record, state your name.
My name is Samuel Hanson. I've been a resident of this town since I was eight years old. Again, my name is Samuel Hanson of 27 Brainard Street, apartment number one, St. Albans, Vermont. I've been a resident in this city since the age of eight, like I stated before. Growing up in St. Albans, I have been a musician, drummer, and guitarist, and an elite athlete of mixed martial arts, wrestling, jiu-jitsu, Muay Thai, kickboxing, almost my whole life. I've also lived in several different locations, areas throughout St. Albans. I grew up on 166 Federal Street. I lived on 336 Lake Street for four years, 12 over Gilman Street for eight years, and two other locations on Federal Street as well next to the Co-op. Next to several different businesses, and in 22 years of being a father, family man, playing instruments, never have the police been called on my home for noise ordinance violations. Martial arts and music is an art. I've also been a coach, wrestling instructor, jiu-jitsu coach, traveling all over the state of ours doing wrestling tournaments with... I can't even count how many kids, under the guidance of Tom Murphy at Real City MMA for six years, and never have I been profiled and harassed by the St. Albans Police Law Enforcement like I've been nowadays. So I'm here today to air my concerns and grievances about and against the way I've been profiled, harassed, unjustly, and unconstitutionally treated by this department. Number one, my family and I have been living at this address for almost two years now. I've been playing my musical instruments freely without interruption for all this time, and it was only as of the end of the summer of 2019 that one of my neighbors started to call and complain about my musical instruments. Now, this isn't even an immediate neighbor of mine. These people live on an entirely different street across from me. These people live at 42 Messenger Street, way across the way from my apartment, which is a whole nother street in itself, and have only started residing there since the winter of 2019. Number two, to begin, on different occasions, I have been harassed by the St. Albans Police Department. For example, on one occasion out of several, I was playing my instrument, and the police were called by one of my neighbors. This was a complaint filed by them saying that I was playing my instruments too loudly. This is of great concern to me, for when the police arrived at my residence, I noticed a police cruiser outside my window, and I left my bedroom studio where I was playing my instruments. When my fiancee and I came into view of my kitchen, and it's a big bay door area, Officer Fuller of the St. Albans PD had come into my residence unannounced, no knocking on my door, and no verbal announcement that he was in my apartment. I questioned the actions taken by Officer Fuller in doing this. When my fiancee and I asked Officer Fuller why he had entered my home unjustly without any notice, he replied by telling us that both the porch door and my main entrance door were wide open. This is false and untrue. We own four domesticated rescue cats that aren't allowed to go outside, and if the doors were wide open, they would have gotten outside. Our doors are always closed because on several occasions, the upstairs neighbor's company on 41 Messenger Street above us have tried entering our residence thinking that it was access to the upstairs neighbor's apartment. After several occurrences, my father-in-law and I had put in a brand-new door with framing provided to us by our neighbor to keep intruders from entering our home. We had changed our front door, as it is public knowledge that the people who reside at 41 Messenger Street are known drug dealers and have been raided by law enforcement on many occasions along with several overdoses. The porch door was newly installed and had been broken in. It was only in for a week prior to this incidence with police. It takes a bit of pushing to get the porch door open, so I immediately questioned Officer Fuller's action to proceed into my home unannounced. He responded with immediate threats of arrest. I asked him to please leave my home. He then returned with a superior officer which I requested to our residence. After speaking with Corporal Schwartz about the situation that had occurred, Corporal Schwartz then spoke with Officer Fuller explaining to him that he cannot unlawfully enter my home for a noise ordinance complaint and/or without a warrant signed by a judge. Corporal Schwartz apologized about the situation and proceeded to tell me that I could play my instruments as long as I wasn't after 10:00 P.M. Since this time, I have been given multiple, and I mean multiple conflicting stories as of when I can play my drum kit and what times I can play my drum kit or my guitars. So... Number three, the calling of the police department has been repeatedly done over the last few months until an agreement was reached amongst all parties. Parties meaning 42 Messenger Street that had called on me, the police, myself, and the honorable Judge Robert Mello even consented that it would be okay for me to play my instruments with my windows mostly or all the way closed as long as they were practiced at a reasonable time of the day. Judge Mello gave me his blessing to do so. When doctor's note was signed and presented to him, this solidifies that playing my instruments is a form and a key factor as a part of my mental health and physical therapy recommendations by my doctors. I do play my instruments at reasonable hours, and I only play them three to four times out of the week, tops. I have a lot of diagnosed health conditions and multiple doctors and physical therapists whom agree that to keep my mind and body functionable, at best, this is the remedy to my health issues. I've had C4, 5, and 6 replaced in my neck with graphite titanium plate, and I have two titanium rods with 10 more screws on each side to keep my neck in place, so I'm lucky I'm even walking. So this is my form of physical therapy, which my doctors and I, over 13 years, have worked on for me to be where I am today. I'm concerned and strongly feel like the St. Albans Police Department unjustly violating my constitutional rights, being prejudiced and/or profiling, and also trying to forcefully prevent me from pursuing my hobbies and mandated mental and physical therapy which keeps me functional as a person. Number four, I believe the most serious episode which happened to me concerning the St. Albans PD had just took place a few days ago on 1/5/20 at 12 to 12:30 P.M. Again, one of my neighbors called the St. Albans Police Department about my instruments being played too loud. Remind you, this was in the early afternoon. I believe this call was made by my neighbors at 41 Messenger Street in retaliation because a week prior, I had called Jim Benson from Animal Control on them concerning the welfare of their cat, which had been left outside for over a month. As a donator and a member of the ASPCA, I am mandated to call about animal cruelty and/or neglect. They, the neighbors, have abandoned this cat on several occasions to the point where my family and I have been feeding him and trying to shelter him in some way or form with a makeshift shelter. I apologize.
Take your time, take your time.
I'm trying. Thank you. I also forewarned the neighbors that I would take proper action and hope that they would shelter their cat from freezing cold in sub-zero temperatures. I feel like them calling the St. Albans Police Department was in retaliation because I've been practicing my instruments for more than a year at this residence, and out of the blue, now they at 41 Messenger Street want to file complaints as well about my music, and they never have before. When the police arrived on 1/5/20, I observed one of the officers, who was Officer McMahon, trying to kick in my porch door, almost like he was testing it for weaknesses. When that didn't work, I then observed Officer McMahon repeatedly trying to use his shoulder to break open my porch door to gain entry to my apartment. When Officer McMahon realized he could not gain entrance to my apartment this way, he came to my other apartment door. Along with Officer McMahon was another policeman, who was Officer Cody of the St. Albans Police Department. While they debated with me about a noise ordinance violation, I witnessed the neighbor's son from upstairs at 41 Messenger Street come around from the opposite side of the building and in front of my porch, which is on Brainard Street. He then started to verbally threaten to do bodily harm to me, and yelling other profanities towards my direction, and neither officer took any kind of action to stop him. When my fiancee Holly came out to the porch and observed the situation start to intensify, she then took it upon herself to educate the officers that the behavior of our neighbor needed to be addressed before things escalated even further. Officer Cody then told our neighbor Brendan Jarvis that he needed to go back on his own side and keep his mouth shut. And Officer Cody had to repeat this command a second time. In the meantime, Officer McMahon stood there doing nothing about the neighbor's behavior but only to pursue on handing out a ticket to me. To end result of this scenario was I was given a $25 ticket for a noise ordinance violation which I feel was very unjust. Number five, I believe I am being unjustly profiled by the St. Albans Police Department. I've tried everything I can do to please my neighbors. I have soundproofed my room to the fullest, spent hundreds of dollars on the soundproofing. I only play my instruments for an hour and 20 minutes to an hour and 30 minutes a few times a week. I do this as part of my physical therapy and mental health ordered by my doctors. I'm physically disabled, and playing my musical instruments is part of what I do to keep my body functioning. My neighbors on Brainard Street have called St. Albans PD many times about extremely loud noises coming from other residences like loud motorcycles revving all hours of the night, workshop table saws being ran until 10 o'clock at night, pool parties with loud yelling and drinking, barking dogs, and loud music at unreasonable times of the night close to our residence on Brainard Street. And the St. Albans Police Department have repetitively refused to respond and/or answer to our complaints. But when someone calls the police on me about playing my instruments, they make every effort to harass and collect from me. Why is this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in. Anyone have any questions? I have one, and that was, I think you mentioned about halfway through you had come to a resolution with the neighbor?
Yeah, yeah. I actually went to court with that neighbor on 42 Messenger Street. And the resolution we came to along with Judge Mello was as long as I'm playing at a reasonable time and my windows are mostly closed, then... and that's then, they wrote in their statement, when I went to court with them, that that's what they were hoping for in end result, was that I would keep my windows mostly closed because they said the cymbals were piercing, which I understand cymbals are loud. So that was the agreement that I had agreed with Judge Mello and the residents on 42 Messenger Street. In their statement, they literally said that that's what they wanted, was just for me to at least mostly close my windows.
That was at 42 Messenger Street?
Yeah.
41?
No, 41 Messenger's never called the police on me until after I called Animal Control on them.
Ken, you got anything else?
I can take it by some note taking that you're gonna be looking into this.
So we will have Dominic, City Manager, meet with Chief Taylor and have a discussion. Can we at some point get a copy of your statement that you shared with us?
Of course you can, of course you can.
I'm not sure how we...
Probably do that. What's next on the agenda?
Do you live in a building you're in alone, Mr. Hanson, or is there other...
I live, I live, I live in a building I live in is what, I live with my fiancee Holly Root and my son Malachi Hanson.
Is there any other apartments in that building?
There are two. There are two. One behind me, one above me.
Excuse me, and I'll make some copies.
None of them have complained about your music?
Not ever. Nope.
Absolutely positive.
I'm absolutely positive. My neighbor Dave lives directly behind me, and he has no, he says he hears my music, but he doesn't, he doesn't care.
So you've been told who the complainants are then?
Yes, I have. Yep.
Are you a good musician?
Oh, that's, that's the other thing. The last time Officer Cody McMahon showed up, that's why I got so confused because Officer Cody said, "It sounds really awesome. You're a good drummer and guitar player." He goes, "Unfortunately, I have to respond to this." I said, "Why do you have to respond when you know it's something so bogus and ridiculous, and you know I'm not doing this wrong? I'm not doing anything wrong." And Judge Mello even told me that I wasn't doing anything wrong as long as it was during a reasonable time of the day. And this was Sunday, like I said, early afternoon. And I don't play for long periods of time because my, like I said, I have titanium through here, and I can't handle like a three-hour jam session. You know, I can do only little increments at a time, and I've been doing this my whole life, so I'm lucky I'm even able to do this at all. So...
Now, I'm not making any judgments on anything here. You know me, I've worked in court before.
Yep, yep.
I don't do that, but do you have copies of the city ordinances?
Uh, yeah.
You know, you should have. I mean, you know, we do have noise ordinances, and we have...
I know it was revised on May 13th of 2019.
Right, so that's an opposite.
Yep, yes, it do.
Make sure. So if somebody says you're doing something at a certain hour, you can say, "Well, this is what the ordinance says."
Right.
It's the industry.
Well, I tried to, that's where we, I said I got in debate with Officer McMahon and Officer Cody while the neighbor came around and made verbal threats to me. That's what I was debating with them about, is the fact that I didn't feel like I was breaking ordinance, and I tried to show them, they didn't want to hear it. They just didn't care.
All right, thank you.
And you need to know the ordinance, excuse me, but what the ordinance actually is as far as the drum playing. We don't know what it is.
I keep getting conflicting stories from every different officer that shows up. Officer Schwartz said I could play from dusk till dawn, and Officer McMahon says, "Oh, well, as long as your windows are partially closed." And he came a second time, and he said, "No, your windows have to be all the way closed." I said, "I already know this. Judge Mello had already informed me that my windows need to be closed." And I even went and bought curtains, soundproof curtains.
Like you said substantially, but I thought you said that Judge Mello said they didn't have to be all the way closed.
He said that mostly closed, but I tried to, just out of respect, try to close them. If I have an air conditioner in my window, I can't all the way close the window because there's an air conditioner there.
And we'll try to, you'll clarify what the ordinance is, and share that as well. You'll have a conversation with chief. So you want to make sure to give your number to Mr. Cloud.
Okay.
We have your...
Is it on your materials?
Marty went to make copies.
What was it? I'm sorry.
Just looking for your phone number. Is it on your materials?
Uh, no, no. I can give it to you right now. It's 802-528-5735.
You just gave it to about 10,000 people.
That's okay. Samuel, everyone called me Sandy though.
Mr. Hanson, I want to thank you for coming in and the way your hand won this. We appreciate that. We will, as I said, Dom will meet with the city manager or the police chief, have a conversation, and they will time train a week or what's reasonable to get back to him.
That's good.
So we'll get back to you within a week.
Okay.
And if you don't hear from them, let us know, and we'll fire them or something.
I don't expect that.
Is there anyone else, is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment?
Just one. I've also played for years, and...
Thank you.
It's not so much the cymbal that's gonna travel, it's the bass, it's your bass drum that's gonna travel to the neighbors.
Yes, yes.
I've been on the giving and receiving side of it. And the other thing is, for electric guitar, if you could really crank it, which is great, can't you use a set of really good headphones and...
Yeah, those, those cost a lot, like more money than what I can afford right now. It's hard to find an actual set that's affordable, I guess you'd say, because music items are not cheap, and I didn't acquire these things overnight. It took me years to acquire all the equipment that I have. Like I said, since I was a young kid, I literally have a Neil Peart, God bless him, style drum kit in my room, and I have it completely soundproofed under the windows, foam behind my pictures. I try to soundproof it, and I know the kick drum is really loud. I've even put a towel inside my kick drum, and whether you're playing an acoustic kit or an electric kit, it doesn't matter, that kick drum is gonna be loud. That's always the loudest part of a drum kit. And so I agree with you completely about the kick drum. It's hard to muffle that.
It just travels, it goes through walls.
Because it just, it almost echoes, and it's almost impossible to completely soundproof it.
Mr. Hanson, thanks for coming in. I have one last question for you. Did you wear that jersey by accident or because of Green Bay Packers?
No, I've been a Cheesehead since I was a kid. My grandfather raised me as a Cheesehead. I didn't, I didn't, I'm not against it anyway, New Patriots, even when... Even when they were playing, I was rooting for them to make it to the AFC Championship game. I root for them every time. They're not playing my team, but when it comes down to them and my team, I always root against them if they're playing against my team.
Obviously, for the 49ers, I don't want to hear that.
No, that's my brother-in-law's favorite team, and my cousin Bobby in California.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, council members.
We're gonna move on. We're gonna actually recess from this meeting. Is there any others? Oh, is there anyone else that had a comment on this?
Or any other issue that's not...
Or any other comments?
Public comment? That's my chat. Is he already doing March and all that stuff?
Maybe we're gonna fire you.
It's coming up in March. So we're gonna recess to move into the liquor control meeting. Currie, if you wanna come on up?
Thank you again.
Thank you folks for coming in. Curry, it's Lori Gertz.
Hi, everybody. So I have tonight's license renewals. I got them out nice and early this year. We have four second class, a first and third class license as well.
So I noticed that Rite Aid and Jolly wasn't included on the graph.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out to me. The Jolly, I think that's definitely not on there, but the Rite Aid, it's actually Walgreens.
Oh, that's...
Yeah, so I'll probably, I'll make it work here. Yeah.
I don't think Jolly had anything, there was nothing based on Jolly, was there?
No, I don't think they've ever had anything. But I can follow up if there was. I'll check tomorrow.
I don't recall. I think a violation was the last one.
Anyone have any questions for Curry on these renewals?
Now, this is under, you're doing the, you're signing the renewals, right?
Yes, so I did submit, I guess we're doing it annually. When I reread my letter, some of the other clerks do it annually too, to submit to the Department of Liquor Control that blanket approval. I don't see why we wouldn't get approved, so I think I will spare you all the signing tonight, but if for some odd reason we don't, we can always sign them at the next meeting if that works for everybody.
Make a motion to approve your license renewals, A through E.
Certainly.
Motion on the second. Are there any questions for Curry? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, motion passes. We have the minutes from the board meeting, November 11th through 19.
Motion to approve minutes, November 11th to 19.
Backing by Chad, motion by Tim.
I forgot to put the minutes in there, I think.
You ready to know if I was there, because I don't remember.
Yes.
Yeah, so I would have been there, yes.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Other business? Curry, do you want to go ahead and introduce municipalities?
Uh, yeah, sure. Just briefly, they have noticed and will probably notice going forward some third-class license renewals, I'm sorry, first class. So they will be with your packets going forward. We never used to get them. So that's something that VLCT and VNCTA are looking to work on the fees with. Currently, there are no fees. It kind of got rolled out for the third-class licenses, but it'll just be a fee of $50 if it's a standalone license. But if it comes with a packet, like it's just a normal process, there's no extra fee for it. So they'll probably, I'm not sure when they'll roll that out, probably July 1st. But I just want to let you know that you'll start seeing those going forward. And I guess it's now the Department of Liquor and Lottery.
Take it all the way.
Yeah, so with that, I just want to give you a heads up.
About the clothe, your last liquor control meeting, we talked about the clothing. The clothing was under Twigs license, or...
Yes, yep. So there was no separate license for it. It was just, forget the stipulation about it, but it was just a new description of it, and it had gone through, and I just overlooked it. I had, we had looked at it, and it was approved. It was just an adjustment.
And so how are you treating it?
I'm just keeping it included. I haven't seen...
That's a Twigs license?
Yeah, yeah. There's nothing additional that I noticed. In fact, they submitted theirs just Friday, so, and there was nothing new on it.
Anyone else?
Yep.
Can I just make one comment while we're in liquor control? I saw Mr. Mannahan's face in a very glossy magazine from Department of Liquor and Lottery that was distributed to the legislators. And I just want to know how much it costs to print all that stuff up.
Also to see. Is that the same photo that was in the post office?
It looks like they got a new photo of him. Did you get a professional photographer for that, Marty?
Go ahead, we'll shop. Curry, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Thanks for coming in.
Sure, could I just add that just this afternoon, the presidential primary ballots did arrive, so people can vote early for that. We're doing the two elections on March 3rd, the local and the presidential primary, so those are here.
How many are on the Democratic side?
10. And their pumpkin's 3.
3.
Thank you, very appreciated.
Want you to adjourn to the control?
So should I adjourn? Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll opposition move forward, so we'll reconvene in the council meeting with item number five, Chip Soyt, launch him up on the planning report.
Thank you, good evening. First up, second reading of an amendment to the land development regulations to increase the height limit that the DRB can allow in the service industrial district to 105 feet for structures that are for storage or processing activities. If you remember, this is something that came up a few months back about the ability of manufacturing businesses to maximize their sites, which in the city's surface industrial district tend to be smaller than you find in your average industrial park these days anyway. Namely, the St. Alvin's Creamery, in terms of some of the improvements that they need to make at their plant going forward and the types of silos that are on the market for them to use for their product. The amendments are on the strike up, and the markups are on the second page of your packet. Basically, everything happens in section 513 and height regulations where the DRB is allowed to grant waivers to increase the heights of structures in various districts around the city. So this pulls out the piece that deals, just a piece that deals specifically with the service industrial district, adds it as item number F, maintains the ability to go up to 85 feet with DRB permission for any structure, and then allows you to go up to 105 feet with DRB permission for structure that's just for storage or processing. It's not supposed to be meant for offices or part of a business that has high occupancy during the day. So we're looking at silos, elevators, that sort of thing. The DRB does have to determine that the structure will more efficiently utilize the site, that it will be compatible with existing and proposed structures in the area, that it can be adequately accessed by public safety personnel, and that if it is a structure under this new allowance between 85 and 105 feet, it has to be set back from the boundary of the service industrial district by the distance that equals the height of that structure or more, so that these taller structures are deeper within the service industrial district and not just at the boundary of the district.
What we had before has not changed since last...
No. City Council accepted it at the first reading.
Any questions for Chip?
So assuming we approve this tonight, the creamery's application will go before the design review board?
The, no, yeah, so there's public hearing tonight, then you can decide whether or not you'd like to adopt it, and then it takes effect within 21 days of being approved. The creamery can then come forward, it would be a site plan application before the development review board. And actually, technically, they could come forward with an application now as an anticipatory application, but regardless, the rule doesn't take effect, the DRB couldn't give permission until 21 days after this rule were to be adopted if the city council so wishes.
Any other questions? Anyone good?
Is this an opportunity for public comment?
Chad was just reminding me that. Yeah, so just state your name, please.
Okay, yes, I'm Kathy Strong, I live in High Street. And I actually have an objection to allowing this change to height restriction. Up on the hill, we can, we can see the skyline, and from your description, this will be a silo or a storage facility, which of course is uglier than anything else than an office building or an apartment building. So it can be the ugliest industrial type structure. And with the setback requirements, I mean, I understand that, I appreciate it, but I wonder if, if the creamery is just wanting this higher structure because it's easier, is this a failure of creativity? It seems to me if they could set back, then they could make structures within the 85 feet restriction set closer, so they can make two of them. Why do they have to go and make one that sticks out above the rest of St. Alvin's? So I object.
I don't, I don't have the answer to your question tonight. We have representatives from the floor up. Do you care to respond to that?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused as to, so where the silos are positioned currently allows for that setback, so we're not actually changing the footprint of where they're going. They're going to be, what is it, 15 feet in difference, which we flew balloons and all, you know, heights.
Streamers and...
Streamers and, you know, all kinds of wind socks to, you know, show everybody the difference.
And can you just share a bit the purpose of the larger silos?
So the purpose of the larger silo is actually, it's an in-process type thing, so we can have more storage within the facility to kind of fully utilize our production equipment. To put more, to get more storage, you'd have to build another tank farm, which would even put even more silos in there at 85 feet. So this is a way to not grow the footprint, but just kind of use the same foundation with 15 feet.
So you're just, just basically taking the top of the silo off, adding another piece?
No, they're bigger silos too.
Okay.
So they're going to be gaining about 15 feet height.
So you're...
On another building. Not, not on the current building. It's another building that you're talking about.
The building, yeah, the building is not going to be the higher restriction, it's just the...
But there's an entirely new building going up that is beyond...
Touch one at a silo. Just, yeah, just one silo, not the building, the building is going to be lower than the original plant building, so you won't even see that. As far as skyline, the only thing that we're asking for extension of is extending the stainless steel silos 15 feet higher. Not put a big stainless steel...
Yeah. Like Chip said, yeah, we're constrained as far as the footprint is concerned, so it makes sense to go up instead of take a realistic, excuse me, point out.
So what increase in percentage is that, going up by that much, 20, 25%?
Yeah, roughly.
What's the difference between 50,000 gallons and 70,000 gallons?
So it's like 30%. Have you folks looked at, you may not be aware, did you see where there was a flag that was in place to show that properly?
I did not, I didn't know it was a...
And it's since then, it's still up?
It's still up, I think there's some little streamers that you can see after all this weather, it might have been blown, you might have to look hard for it.
One other just aside, stainless steel sounds actually a little better because the structure currently really needs a coat of paint.
Oh, yeah, so that's part of the space one project, is, you know, the FDA's committed into upgrading the plant, and this is step one, so we've got to, we've got to get aesthetic pleasing as well. And we've talked to Dominic about other aspects of that that are involved with this project. So that means a lot to the FDA too, when we're going to build a plant that's...
Everybody looks at it, we're...
It's going to be stainless.
Any more comments from the public? Thank you for coming in. Is that a little bit different than what you thought, did you think the building was going higher?
No, I thought it would be a big silo.
And it is one silo or two?
There's one.
One.
But those are planned to build another one eventually, or...
Yeah, potentially, it's an area that we could grow it. But as far as height, I guess, with the grain elevator that's, you know, across, across the weight ramp there, I mean, that's going to be 20 something feet higher than what we're wanting. You know, there are higher things in the skyline than what these two silos are.
Are these going to look similar in shape to what's there now, or...
Yeah, they'll be stainless.
Okay.
So Chip, you're looking for consideration of the adoption of the amended height regulations for the district, correct?
Yes.
If you wish.
Someone? I have a motion by Chad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Murray. Any further conversation, comments?
I think I'm going to abstain with that.
Do you want to...
I'll...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, yeah, that's fine.
I'll, I'll suck it, it's a shoe stain.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
So motion passes? With one abstention with Murray. Chip, moving on to public information regarding grant application.
We, as you know, we have an impending move of the Police Department Public Safety Building to a building that's currently occupied by CCB on South Main Street. It's one of the benefits of the Congress and Main Project to be able to have an improved public safety facility. There's certainly going to be renovation costs associated with that, but there are also going to be some significant equipment and furniture needs with the move. And there is a grant program, the USDA World Development Community Facilities Grant Program that will pay for things like public safety equipment. So we applied to this grant program for what would amount to $109,176 for things like a lot of dispatch consoles and dispatch equipment, a radio tower, the closed circuit TV system for the complex, the voice and data system, security gate and laser printer, some items that the Police Department is going to need for security and being able to serve the communities with police service, but also with the dispatch service that we provide many communities with. A requirement of the grant program is that we hold this public information meeting, we put out a warning, and just to describe the project to the public, get any city council comments, and just let folks know that the grant application has been put in. I think we'll hear next month, I'll have to double check on that, on whether or not we get funded. And the grant funds, 35%, so this is 35% of the total equipment quotes that we had thus far, we put them in this grant application.
And what's it done on, if you were to get it?
Probably June at the earliest, when we, you know, have something in hand.
I believe by person, like France, it seemed like we may have in the past, I just don't know if it was for facilities or just communication devices.
I know that police has used a lot of US Department of Justice programs in the past for equipment, including communications if I'm not mistaken. I can't remember the last time we went before USDA RD community facilities. USDA RD, they were huge, they were a big benefit to the city for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. That program really helped out what we needed to do at the wastewater treatment plant, but I think this is a first for community facilities.
Any comments from the public? From the press?
Sounds great.
All right.
All right.
So... This information, no motion needed.
Correct, we just had to show that we had a public information meeting.
Please make sure the record shows that Tom thought this was great.
I will.
Finally made it into the record.
Okay, moving on, is Jeff coming tonight?
I was hoping he didn't make it, but I haven't seen him yet, so I carry the flag.
He always picks the smelly night, so... So, okay, well then let's move on to a public hearing on the amendment for regarding the local option tax. We have Jeff Carr here, he has not made it yet, hopefully Jeff is fine. Jeff had two things going on today too, right?
Yeah, and he had activities in the State House, I'm sure, so...
And I think it was meeting the high meeting as well, so... So he made pop in that stuff, so with that, Tom, you'll take the ball and run with it, so if you want to go with that?
I've been waiting years to get a Jeff Carr impersonation.
The only difference is I'm going to let you have it.
So on the agenda is a public hearing for the charter amendment regarding the local option tax. As viewers and as thought it was a call for the last couple of months, the council's been exploring, and then ultimately decided to adopt a provision for a retaliating warning to adopt a local option sales tax. The local option sales and use tax would be added to the existing state tax, so there isn't any additional administrative burden on local retailers. The state of Vermont will collect it for us and make quarterly payments to the city of St. Alvin's. Perhaps most importantly, unlike local option taxes of 5 or 6 years ago, recent US Supreme Court precedent applies the local option tax to online purchases. And so this really is a new, a new opportunity that allows us to capture some of these revenues off the internet and reinvest them in the community and help strengthen the community. To that end, the consultant economist has estimated the revenues as a revised memo as receipts. Current data is estimating in FY '21, revenue stream of $600,000,000. That doesn't include any revenues from the rooms tax, which should be applied to the local hotel. And one of the questions we get a lot is, well, what's that worth? We used to talk in terms of the property tax. Tell me what this means in terms of the property tax. Well, it's 14 cents on the tax rate, so that's significant. And what, the council has adopted a policy for how to use those funds, reading from that. The council said the local option revenue should reduce pressure on the property tax while continuing the city's record of public investment. At least 7.5% of the annual local option tax revenues shall be utilized to reduce the cost and increase access to recreation program for the disadvantaged and the elderly. At least 5% of annual local option revenues shall be saved and used to create a rainy day fund or undesignated fund balance. And at least 5% of annual local option revenues shall be directed to replenish the redevelopment fund. In FY '21, the first year of the program, these revenues are proposed for the community pool at Hardak and the neighborhood sidewalk project. Combined, those two are over $4 million in public improvements that directly benefits St. Alvin's city residents and voters that otherwise have to be paid for just by the property tax or not done at all. And so one of the questions I get is, well, why should people vote for this? And I think for St. Alvin's city voters, it's really a no-brainer. Voters aren't giving up any additional control of the budget, all these revenues will be approved through the city budgeting process. The only thing they're gaining, the main thing they're gaining is the city's services and the tax burden is distributed out over a wider audience. And so folks who live in outline communities or who are visiting our city and have a meal at Jeff's or have a beer in a restaurant or bar and consume services don't pay anything for that right now. This is a chance to capture some of that revenue. One of the pieces that the economist has repeatedly said is it's, it's big enough to make a difference, $630,000 is real money, particularly when used to service debt on public projects, but it's not large enough to cause any disruptive impact in the communities that have adopted it. There's no evidence in the communities that have adopted it statewide that it impacts economic behavior, particularly for those like us who are last names, so to speak. The folks that are competing with us, they all have a local option tax already, St. Alvin's Town, South Burlington, Williston, Burlington. St. Albans Town, South Burlington, Williston, Burlington. So, for all of those reasons, is why staff identified it as an opportunity, brought it forward to the council for consideration. The warning on the article, the article in warning will read, "Shall the St. Albans City Charter be amended to authorize the imposition of a 1 percent tax on sales, meals, alcoholic beverages and rooms?" Sales, meals, alcoholic beverages and rooms. That will, if it passes, that then will be forwarded to the legislature and the city's charter will be amended ideally in this legislative session. And that will facilitate the construction of a pool and the construction of the neighborhood sidewalk project. There's additional public hearings that are scheduled. This is the first one tonight, on January 13th at 7:00. There's two more scheduled, February 10th at 7:00 and February 24th at 7:00.
Dom, which one is Jeff doing his presentation on?
We can get him to the next one.
So, we're looking at...
Next Monday?
February 10th.
Well, I thought we were on the second one.
I thought it was coming up quicker than the next meeting.
So...
I thought we were doing a separate, a separate presentation aside from our meeting.
Well, we were doing a separate presentation aside from our meeting on the 6th, but everybody felt like that was too early, you know? So, we pushed it back to the 13th, just tonight.
Would Tim and I defer to the discussion?
I think we did it. I think we did it online. We're for the...
That's fine. So, next meeting will be...
Next meeting on the 10th.
I guess my only concern tied into a board meeting is it might not get the same attention as a separate discussion.
Yeah. We can table all the other items and focus.
What do others think?
Can I still get the ability to talk at the end?
Yeah, that's not a concern as well.
Yeah, we can do all that, for sure.
Twice a month? The list will be shorter. Alright, so Jeff Carr will be back to do a presentation.
We can get Jeff up here on the 10th. Yep. Try to get Jeff here, up here on the 10th. Still mean nothing happened until tonight, but...
Okay. Any public comments? Feel free to take your employee hat off if you choose, if you have any comments.
I'm not sure the public is actually tuned in yet.
Agreed.
As to what's going on. It's come up a couple of times when I've been out walking the dog, and more questions than folks having an opinion either way yet, so I think, I hope that people will come on the 10th or the 24th that they've got questions and concerns.
The people I spoke with, the people I would think would have been more concerned about it, that don't seem to have a problem with it. They would have a problem if it was just city taxpayers, but seeing it's public in general, I mean, just they don't seem to have a problem.
And the social media perspective?
Pool's been 10 times, John, 10 times as much attention as this has on social media that I've seen.
But I don't think that people are seeing any connection between the two.
No.
And I'm worried, that's more worrisome than it is to our benefit because looking at on a ballot box as, and having the name, local option tax lends itself to a no vote rather than an informed vote, which is hopefully what's going to happen on February 10th with some, at least getting some press out there too.
So, one of the... We're working on getting some of the outreach and information to populate the newspapers and social media in the upcoming weeks. We've been working on a lot of writers, and then going to the budget the last couple of weeks, and to the extent that that seems to be shaping up, we can turn our attention to this. We've also been working on getting some of the visuals in place for the pool. It's been a little bit of a challenge to help get the concept of the dome over a pool and have it come across in a rendering. But I just saw some stuff earlier tonight that looks like we're getting some traction.
Could it be good to have like a, you know, kind of like an overhead, not directly overhead, but kind of like an angle and see how it fits into the landscape up there, both summer and winter?
We've taken some drone shots and some renderings have been drawn, and we're working to finalize those, so. You know, I think this is, this is the season where everybody starts to tune in there. It's a champion.
By the way, did the earthquake miss some of our pictures there? I guess I'm kind of crooked behind the other one.
Does anyone have any questions for Dom on this? Murray?
Yeah?
Get him, he's set. Alright, I know you came in a little late. We're on the local option tax. Do you have any?
I'm interested in hearing about more of that here.
Which I think we're talking, February 10th would be the date for that. The economist will be here to present, we hope. So, that would be the date you want to mark on the calendar. Good. Anything else on that, Dom? No. Just to clarify to folks, you have the new estimate from Jeff, which is a little different than the first conversation we had, so just make sure you know facts, throw away any other paperwork. Okay, we're moving on to the budget.
So, I'd like to start by just recognizing the team that put their together. Tom lights did a really great job. He and the other department has really struck a great balance of advocacy and collaboration and that same theme extended when we got to the Finance Committee roughly nine weeks ago. So, with that, I'll try to walk you through and give you some highlights, try to give you a tenor of it, and you're welcome to question as we go along. Try to keep it brief. The impact of the change on homeowners is 0 percent. Any questions?
Can you just say it one more time? Say it one more time.
Say it a little louder.
So, the tax rate last year was 93 cents. It'll be 93 cents again in the budget that's proposed. If you turn your packet to the first page, there's, most of the details in the ensuing pages, but just draw your attention to line 13, the affiliate fee at $8,500, again produce some real revenue there. Kristen gave us all the rulers as well.
Thank you, Kristen.
The rest of the revenues, expensive government. Best dealt with on the department by department basis.
Work more impressive with the lawyers. How many of these calls, by the way? Depending on the tax rate.
You're going to leave mine in the rapids or returns, give it back.
The first cost center is the Finance Administration Cost Center. Two items of interest here, line 38, redevelopment fund repayment, we're proposing $20,000. Mayoral initiatives, we're proposing $5,000. Been the fastest growing one on the budget, nearly doubled overnight.
The return on that, that's good.
That is good, that is good, yeah.
Tim's not presenting in Disney World Saturday next, so worry.
The other thing I would draw your attention to is line 48, the HRA cost, that's the health reimbursement accounts. There's a decrease that we're budgeting this year from 115 to 100. We continue to have pretty good luck with our health plan, which pairs a high deductible health insurance plan with a health savings account, employees pay 100 percent of the deductible up to $3,000. That's working well, continues to, last item in this cost center is legal. Pleased to say that we're budgeting $10,000 less than legal expenses.
Can we go back to the started Justice Center, that's on the income side of it?
Yep. You wait till we get to that department on detail. Alright. Actually, I think I know which question. Why don't you ask that?
So, there's growth in that, right, in the income, in the revenue side?
There's other grants, yeah.
So, is that, we're having discussions with Town and Milton. Is that coming with funding?
Nina could speak to that more directly. The city's in for about 30 grand in general. New this year is she's hoping to raise 50 grand from other communities as well. Whether the Milton program would be fee for service, Tom, do you know? Yeah, and typically those are fee for service. Whether it will result in additional appropriation, I kind of doubt it. Alright, so on page four, city clerk. We continue to budget the alcohol tax revenues at $19,000. If the local option tax passes, the city alcohol tax would go away, that $19,000 would remain, so there'll be no impact in the clerk's budget. Everything else is pretty straightforward, a lot changes or activity here. Next cost center is the planning and development budget, total revenues of 43.8.
Can we just go back real quickly to, not that it means a whole lot, but are we, how do we think we're going to jump dog licenses, dog license registrations from 2,800 to almost 13,000?
So, that's the actuals, right? You looking at line six?
I'm looking at, yeah, line six. This is actual, 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 oh wait, okay, no. Yeah, 2020 budget.
So, this year we're budgeting $2,850.
And we've done $12,849.
That's what the, that's what the...
I suspect there's probably revenue that's going to be moved to a different account, because I know we haven't done that much, and maybe that part of it goes to the state.
Right.
So, we collect it all, and we're going to send most of that to the state.
Okay, sorry.
So, it's just, if you would see, if we had shown the actuals for now, it'd be different.
Okay, sorry.
The column M is the budget, we're budgeting.
Yep.
Alright, planning development, good. Not a lot of change programmatically here with MP and D, the one shift we have recommended is line 41, the city marketing campaign. We've reduced that to 10. You'll see a number of areas where we've nipped and tucked to bring the budget in at 0 percent, and that's one. I think that's it for planning and development. Not a lot of activity in assessing department, but one thing we are doing this year is line 27, we've created a continually reappraisal reserve of $10,000. We budgeted that last year as well. Our CLAs and the operators, so it's not evident, but it's time to start thinking about, you have your order to reappraise when it gets to 80, it's time to start thinking about that. Next cost center is debt service. Draw your attention to line 16, $42,000 is the annual debt service on the fit up portion of the new police station. Line 21 is dispatch's share of the fit up. Line 22 is debt service on $100,000 for a new, excuse me, the new tower on Georgia Mountain. Talk about that a little more when we get into the dispatch cost center. And then finally, on the next page, line 53 is an additional sidewalk plow, debt service on a sidewalk plow for a couple of hours. Neighborhood sidewalks, line 59, that's the last increase for the final debt on the neighborhood sidewalks. Current bond portion is supported by the property tax.
So, is that extra sidewalk plow or is that replacing what's over there?
Marty can speak to that. Marty, you want to talk about the sidewalk plow?
Is that a new one or are we...
It would be a new one, but it's maintaining the fleet we have now. The issue we have now is the two oldest ones are no longer being serviced by Viking. They've gotten out of the business of the MBs, so parts are going to be coming a little more shares.
So, it's going to be status quo?
We'll maintain the oldest two as long as we can because there's no value to selling them. But this will be an additional, and this is a different unit than we currently have. This is one a lot of the municipalities are going to. It's a much cheaper unit. It's more compact, plus you can put other attachments, so you can use it in the summer for mowing and a lot of other stuff, so.
Will it fit the sidewalks better?
It'll be a 48-inch broom on it instead of a, yeah, 54, so.
Nice to hear. Just something to consider, I've seen a lot of towns that are just moving away from these, that specialty sidewalk plow, and they're starting to use other equipment.
That's what this is. It's a Beratrix.
Is it going to name, Marty? What's a better name than sidewalk plow?
Well, it's a Beratrix unit, is what it's called, but it's a versatile unit. They, like Richmond has one, Williston, I think, has purchased one, Essex has got one. A lot of the local contractors that have contracts with like immigration and stuff have purchased them for their sidewalks around their buildings, but the value is they can use them in the offseason for a lot of other work as well. We actually demoed one this summer to mow Hardak at the very top, and it climbed the top and mowed that, hasn't been mowed or rush hogged in probably three years, so.
I was going to say, the ones I've seen tour around Burlington, they almost look like a small tractor with a catalog on them.
Right.
And they had to move one in front. I think they might have a small door in the back.
Yeah, it's probably a tanker for their variety, like ours. They have, they have MBs too. They're getting out of the MBs, but in fact, they just had a couple of their older ones they were trying to sell.
Yeah.
They had two of them for 12 grand, which we considered just to use them for the parts to keep ours going down the road.
Definitely a small, a small door in the back of the room on the front. Thank you.
Be tough going backwards on the 27th.
I think, I must issue it a little bit here and there is what I'm thinking.
Alright, fire department?
Just a minimal retirement of any debt service.
Not this year, but looking out, I think the total number is 48,000. Is that right, Tom?
I'm looking to that FY '41, I think there'll be some...
Yeah, but I think we do have a long-term plan for you, Mr. Merritt. FY '41 is going to be a good year.
Be about the time your kids are going to college.
When's our tip that done, Tom? 35?
33.
33. Yeah, that's the best year.
Hold on till then.
Alright, fire department continues to have base revenues of just under 100 grand. It's pretty typical in past years when you strip out the debt. Line 16, the salary adjustments, it's just due to some reclassifications of the cost center. Line 18, we've given the call force a little bump and hasn't gone anywhere. And I don't think there's any significant changes elsewhere in the budget. Line 63, total net operations of 200,000. She takes the time with Police Department. This is an area, probably the biggest area that we spent our time in the budget development process. And there's a number of, number of things at play here. Obviously, we have the station coming on and the need to finance that transition. But one of the areas we spent the most time on, jumped down to expenditures, I'll come back to revenues, is the staff salary line item. We're budgeting an additional $225,000 for staff salaries. I don't want you to think people are getting 15 percent raises. The average raise in the... The average raise in the union contract is three and a half percent combined staff and colon. But what that's going to is our growing realization about what we have to do to keep staffing levels up in the police department. This year, we filled our vacancies with folks who needed to go to the police department, to the police academy. And so we brought them on in various capacities. Some were brought on half-time, some were brought on to work parks patrol, some were brought on as trainees, just before they went to the department, just to get them committed to us, and so that another department can't grab them. But then they have to go to the police academy for six months, and during that time, we're paying them for six months. And we're also paying the overtime on the back end of the officers who are filling their slots. So it's not until halfway through the fiscal year that you begin to see a return on that investment, which is where we are right now. If none of them drop out in the police academy, or realize that police work isn't a good fit. So there was a lot of wrangling, honestly, between Tom and I about what it, what it takes to budget that salary number. And this was the advocacy part. And at the end of the day, this is what we think we need to be sure that we have the revenues to continually keep our officers full, our officer slots full, or nearly so. When you get too far down in staffing, it's hard to climb back out. So it's a proactive business that you need to keep people with the size of the department, thirty out of officers. You can imagine any workforce, there's always somebody who's moving on involuntarily or involuntarily. Jumping back to revenues for a minute, this budget proposes an increase to the town contract with Highgate. Gary's the chief manager in that conversation. They've indicated they would be interested in some more hours if we were willing to give it to them. So this budget contemplates an increase from twenty-four to thirty, but it also increases the hourly rate. Last year, we were in the fifty-eight dollars an hour range, and this budget, we've done a lot of analysis of what our costs are this budget, and proposal to Highgate put it at sixty-nine. Jumping back to expenditures on the bottom, line thirty-nine is beamers. We are seeing some increase in the retirement plan. The state's raising the rates through the legislature, which is fine. They need to do that for this often to the plan, but also as we're working to keep our racks full, we're seeing increased costs there.
Now, can we go back to salaries for a moment?
Yeah.
So if I'm reading it right, we bumped up straight salary by seventy-five thousand?
By two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two twenty-five, you're one line under. That's overtime.
You got your ruler?
No, we went from, your act one twenty-nineteen was one million three hundred and seventy-five thousand, right? To one million four hundred and fifty thousand?
But we're in the twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one.
So, budget to budget.
Oh, right.
One million four fifty to one six seven five.
So is that, and your overtime, your overtime was down significantly this year? You had to budget it at one seventy-five.
And we're only six months in, but we've spent eighty-three percent of that. We've, we've run all kinds of ratios and analysis between the relationship between the salary line item and the overtime line item, and to some extent, one offsets the other.
Right, right. That was going to be my point.
But not entirely, because the nature of police work produces overtime. At the end of a shift, we're happy, and we never know what's going to come up. More officers do more work, and it generates more overtime. So we need more officers in order to have the overtime be manageable, and for the quality of life and sound decision-making of our officers. But we can't hire our way out of the overtime budget because of the nature of the beast.
And you're getting to a, you're getting to an equation that you're getting comfortable with.
Yeah, yeah, we're pretty comfortable with it. It's three hundred thousand that we've added to the budget, you know, that was Tom Blake's best, six weeks ago. So I don't think it needs to go any higher, and I don't think it can go any lower. And it's been a moving target, you know, for the last few years. But what happens is it's such a lot, you know, it's thirty-five percent of the budget. So if we don't hit it right, it can have a major impact on our financials, and I think it's a point that we'll look back at in the past couple of years. Next item I draw your attention to is line seventy-six. In order to afford some of those things, we took a year off of buying an additional cruiser. We've got the police portion of the line seventy-nine, the police portion of the building lease budget here. And I think that pretty much covers it for this cost center. Last year, we were poking at one point eight, this year, we're at one point nine, net operation. Similar story in dispatch. Much like our police department, we're finding that the best way to reduce costs for city taxpayers is to achieve some level of economies of scale for officer recruitment, and to be able to ride out the inherent undulations in that, in that market, which means we grow, we can grow and regionalize our services even more so in dispatch. We're also getting a lot of calls within the dispatch community to stabilize and invest in the infrastructure. It's not just about the people, but it's also about the technology and the towers, and the equipment that gets mounted on the towers. So Mo LaMott's brought a lot of professionalism to that operation. This budget calls for, in addition to the fed-up of the new station and the construction of the new communication tower on the new station, an additional tower up on Georgia Mountain, which is just very strategically located, both in terms of location and height. And so we're in negotiations to have a new tower up there. And you think that's going to cost about a hundred grand. What that does then is it requires us to then look at the model that we have for other dispatch agencies to provide service for. And so we've restructured the model this year to simplify it. It's now entirely based around population. Our fee is twelve dollars per person in the community. That raises some additional revenue, about an additional one hundred and eighteen, which goes into that cost center. But it's a new rate structure, and there are some increases, so the chief and Mo will be out explaining and having those meetings with our dispatch clerks. There's a similar line item occurring on, similar dynamic occurring on the salaries and overtime in dispatch. We've added an additional one hundred and ten thousand here. We believe this is, again, what it takes to adequately staff dispatch. We're trying, like Hack, to have two people on at night at all times. That can be a real hard, the overnight shift is always a hard position to fill. When it goes down to one person on by themselves overnight, it gets even harder. So we're trying to keep two people on overnight, particularly as we take on new agencies like Milton, which we just picked up last year. At the bottom of the cost center, lines forty-six and forty-seven, we see the building lease and building renovation expenses.
Who's dispatching for Milton previously?
Colchester. Needless to say, I always drive a speed limit in Colchester now. Next is animal control. Not a lot of activity here, it's a twenty thousand dollar a year program. Next is recreation. Couple of items to draw your attention to. Line five, miscellaneous program revenue, that's up to a hundred and thirty, that just really continues to grow. The entrepreneurial team that we've got over in rec, line ten, similarly in day camp. We're up to a hundred and ninety-five thousand that we're proposing. Look at the actuals for this year, that's at eleven-thirty, where those are some pretty compelling numbers. Line sixteen, we're starting to see some revenue for city hall events. And line seventeen, one of Kelly's innovations, is she struck agreements with outline towns to pay the difference between the city rate and the non-resident rate for their residents that access our programs. That's a big part of what accounts for some of the revenues up above. But the revenues don't come without expenses, so line twenty-eight is the part-time help. So those are the people that deliver that programming that's driving the revenues. Line thirty-six, instructor fees. Similarly, in line forty-seven, those are the credit card fees, which is allowing people to sign on and register their kids, open the internet.
Have we found a, do you know if we found a day camp director for the summer?
I haven't heard that we have. You haven't heard that they have yet, Tom, have you?
No.
This takes us down to the pool. The pool senses balances out, depending on how the better shapes up. We're budgeting a hundred and twenty thousand in revenues and a hundred and eighteen in expenditures. One of the innovations that we're rolling out within this fiscal year is we've gotten a lot of encouragement and advocacy from participants in our programs that there needs to be a sibling discount. So Kelly's phasing in, and starting to be phasing in for next year. A new program where the third kid is fifty percent off, and the fourth child is free. We've done analysis, we don't see that's going to impact our revenues in a major way, but it's designed to respond to concerns we've been hearing, and we need to do more to support folks that are bringing multiple kids to the programs.
So this, people are going to hear this, but my wife's pregnant, so we can take advantage of that for a kid. You didn't take that out. We think we're going to save quite a bit of money.
Yeah.
Think you're going to need it.
What did we say, two thousand forty-one? The next page has some of the Hardak expenditures. There's some new line items here that reflects the move of the recreation offices up there. So we're budgeting some increased maintenance, telephone and internet utilities. We're continuing to budget ten thousand for miscellaneous. Within Barlow, we're seeing that facility transition a lot. We're, we're making, we're collecting more revenue from delivering programming through it and renting it out than we are in having base tenants that are there all the time. We wouldn't necessarily turn away a base tenant if somebody had an interest, but the building's continued to last couple of years. It's an expensive building to operate. It costs us thirty-five grand a year to operate Barlow, so. Yeah, you know, it's just not, it's not a building that's citoyan. And there's no CIP in RAC. Case is the public works. Line eleven is the debt proceeds coming in for the new snow removal device. Jumping down to expenditures, there's a reduction in the salary line item, but again, that's just another reclassification. Tree removal and replacement is level on lines thirty-three and thirty-four. It's level funded at twenty. Line thirty-nine's light increase in streetscape maintenance, up to sixty-seven. Jumping all the way down to line seventy-two, we're continuing to see some savings in our electricity and streetlights. This is, you know, we converted a couple of years ago to the LEDs and efficiency savings. Rarely do I see a calculation of efficiency savings that's so crystal clear as this one. Often, it's kind of amorphous, so.
Can we go back to the Barlow revenue?
Yeah.
What am I missing on that? It shows thirty-five hundred.
So previously, you know, if you look back at two thousand sixteen,
Yep.
we had, I think, three tenants, there's four rooms up there.
Yeah.
The four were rented.
Right.
And now, just one rented? How many are, right?
Just one, yeah. The rest is all programmed.
Yeah, and the one is, is that ours?
Yeah.
So effectively, the whole building is programmed.
But we were generating twenty-two thousand, right?
Yeah, so where all that revenue, if you look at the note, the tenants have moved away, but the increased uses stays reflected up above in the revenues.
So it's a miscellaneous program?
It's a miscellaneous, okay, all right. All right, public works, right, we're talking street lights. Line eighty-eight, we do have a new line item with Choffee Park maintenance. I would hope Mr. Choffee would appreciate that. I'll steer your number. So we put a thousand in. Most of the work was done down there by Little League, and that's was the first time we fudged anything in Choffee Park, but we do have some expenses that occur down there. We've increased the Tatter Park line item by eight thousand, and we've level funded Barlow. There's some more funds over here for Hardak, you know, if we pinched a little bit. And then line one-eleven, this is the CIP portion, the street improvement program, which is paving budget. It's a small, it's additional five grand, two sixty-five. Probably out of the works, but that's what we could do this year. Any questions on public works? Next is the parking program. Not a lot of change here, but the, on the revenue side, line eleven, the hotel is continuing to exceed their performance projections, but they're realizing that they don't need as much parking, so they overshot it. So they're ratcheting back their uses of parking spaces. That reflects our revenues, which is a good thing for us, because then we can supplement spaces to others. And then line thirty-eight, we've reduced the capital reserves slightly down to thirty-six thousand. And then the last item is the RJC, the Justice Center. As I mentioned, we put about thirty thousand into this, but the bulk of it is state incredible grants that go into the city. There isn't any, there isn't any charge for the in-kind services or the administrative support that we provide. But I think that's it in a nutshell. We always show the library budget. We always show the library budget, we have no control over it. All of our questions?
We just have a couple of quick ones. And it's obviously in this budget, but we have some kind of plan for the buildings that PDs currently in right now when they move out. Do we have something going on?
We don't have a plan, we have some ideas. One of the ideas is to move the restored justice center into that. They're currently renting space and paying quite a bit for it. That might be a good fit. Part of that discussion is what to do with the fire department. And that begins to get into the regional fire service delivery concept. It's one of the reasons we held off is when we got this, when we started looking for a new public safety vote, there was a lot of conversation about maybe leaning back to the town. I haven't had any of those conversations with the town about the feasibility of that. Right now, we're just kind of focused on getting through phase one. But we certainly welcome additional ideas that folks have.
And my second question, more kind of, less about the budget, but kind of, but our policing is pretty much all reactive, so I'd kind of love to know more from Gary about what we're going to do proactively about trying to reduce some of the culls in crime and everything. So example, the fire department, Fireman Joe would go, smoke detectors and, you know, everything that you need to do to, you know.
You're talking fire police?
I'm just saying, this is what, you know, this is what the fire department's done over 100 years, you know, between code and all the proactive approaches that they've done to help reduce basically the fire budget that towns have to administer. So I'm just kind of wondering, what are some of the proactive things that we're doing with the police department? Instead of just responding to every call, we've got to be doing something. I mean, we can't be just reactive all the time. So, you know, community policing, what kind of, what are we doing for community policing? What kind of time are we spending doing that? You know, interacting, there was a great video, they, you know, one of the disaster stopped and shot hoops with a couple of kids at the end of the screen. You know, what other things are we doing to be proactive in trying to reduce our crime rate? Have an impact on the community?
So that's a good conversation with the chief. A couple of things that come to mind for me out of the gate are the SRO program. Which isn't 100% funded. You know, that. So we lose money on that, and that's an investment that we make in the schools.
That's a good one.
Parks patrol is another one that comes to mind. There's various ones that come and go, you know, the coffee with a cop, neighborhood watch, some of those things.
They've done some walking to school with the kids too, right?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's an area we could do, we could do more in, and I think the chief would agree. You know, honestly, we've just been in kind of a triage mode with the opia thing and trying to keep the staffing levels up to deliver the services. At the same time that we're trying to grow the department to drive down the cost. But I meant, in our interview process, the chief talks a lot about community policing as a value. And he and I and the rest of the leaders of the department talk a lot about the relationship with the community and the importance of building that relationship, particularly in some of the challenges we've had over the last six months and some of the use of force issues. All of that, I think, is about relationships with the community. You're talking to, you know, what can we do this more proactively as well taken?
That's it, thank you. One question, did we have money in here for the Maple Street park?
We don't have money in here yet. We don't have an idea yet with that, the cost. We can just take, Kelly, I told Kelly, get Pat and Ally, the playground guy, out there, let's get a plan together. I think if we get that plan and we get part of the way through the year, we could revisit it and look at reprogramming some costs over there if we wanted to do something.
I had shared with her also, James, I've had some grant dollars out there to potentially apply for as well.
Yeah, yeah.
I think up to 50,000, which wouldn't have a significant effect on that.
Oh, sure. She looked, we talked about that this morning, she looked at it, she thought there was some reason why she thought it would be hard to access that program for that application. Forget what it was, ask her to come back if you want.
I have another question, I should have one more quick question. Do we have, I'm going to try to get a paper copy just because it's so hard to do on iPad. But do we have anything in our budget for graffiti removal or something for the arts around installing, you know, helping with art projects around, like if someone wanted to paint a mural inside of their building? Do we have anything to add to our budget to help them with that? You know, removing some of that or things official.
I think we usually cover, cover the removal. If you're one of our existing line items, that probably comes out of repair and maintenance or supplies somewhere. It's mostly people, not supplies. And if somebody had an idea for a mural, I would think we could take that out of the city marketing campaign. One of the professional services line items.
Or the rec budget?
Or the rec, yeah.
Yeah, one quick question.
No?
Any other questions, Sam?
Are you, are we in B?
No, I guess not, I just want to follow up on the budget question.
No, no.
No more budget questions? Do we want to entertain a motion for a draft?
Nick, wait, you were beaming the finance committee recommendations, right?
Yeah.
See that, Tim?
Seven B.
Oh, right. Well, we're the financial committee recommendations.
We didn't like it at all. We all met and and we discussed the budget that's proposed by the manager. We don't, we don't have a second guess. What the, he presents or Tom. But one thing that we did get that you guys didn't get was another additional set of sheets which had a history over the last four or five years or six years of what the budget proposal was in the actual. Here you just saw what the actuals were for the last five or six years. So that we could see if there were any differences from year to year as far as, I mean, are we really budgeting a lot for, you know. Fire apparatus, fire safety apparatus, and then not using it. And then, and you know, what can we do to, none of that stuff, I mean, actually over the last couple of years, none of that stuff happens anymore. When we first started to take a look at this, when we didn't have this level of information. Now, everything that we saw was within a, within a percent, right? Wouldn't you say, Tom, a percent or two?
It's really.
And, you know, the reoccurring themes were always roads, sidewalks, police department, rec. That's what everyone wants. And to have it come in under a zero percent. Who would have thought that?
Well, here's a question, Tom, talking about zero percent. What happens if local option tax fails, pool passes?
I don't think there's a pool. That's coming up in how we were in the word of the warning. You know, I think we could, we could have that conversation, but I think it's. My, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago. My review of the council was, this budget is set up, it's a base budget, it doesn't have the pool in it, it doesn't have neighborhood sidewalks in it. And the only way those projects that get done is if the local option passes. Arguably, we still have the authority. But I think the plan that we sold to the voters was zero percent. To me, it feels more consistent to, you know, if if that were the case, I would recommend you consider going back to him, asking him again. Because it's kind of a split decision.
That's why it's important, I mean, the first question we got is in the budget, all of us, was, is this predicated on the local option tax in the area? Is that directly, no, but indirectly, yes. And without having, without having that local option tax there, the zero percent doesn't happen. It just, and there's other things that.
If you want to move forward with the other stuff.
Yeah, 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 it just, it doesn't go that way. We want to, if we want those reoccurring themes to be taken care of, police, rec, sidewalks, roads, we need to have some additional help, or else this isn't zero. Because we're going to put it in there, and this is going to be something other than zero. And that's why it's important for the public to know, one of the things they want is they want the burden off the taxpayer, the property tax owner. And the only way that's going to happen is with the local option tax. And still come in with this type of budget. And that's why it's important, like we talked about earlier, to educate as to, because I think right now we have an uninformed voter. Who doesn't know what, you said it yourself, there's more going on about the pool right now than there's about the local option tax. It doesn't work without both of them.
So. But the simplest way to just hammer that home, to explain to our neighbors what we're presenting to them is the stuff that they're used to getting with no increase on the property tax. But if they want the investments in those things that we've been hearing that people want, then we are shifting the burden of those investments from the property tax to the local option tax. And so the choice that we're presenting to the voter is, if you want this stuff, support the local option tax, and we've got a package that doesn't put any additional burden this year on the property tax. That's a pretty succinct argument.
And we get sidewalks, we get $400,000 additional money for our police and dispatch. Invented in this budget? I mean, when we first heard about it, I think Jim will agree, we were no way. On New Year's Eve, I was approached by somebody and they said, really, a 1% tax on all of us? And that wasn't the time to discuss it, but I look back now and I wish I had. I wish I'd said, well, wait a minute, no, let me, let me tell you what's really going on. But there was alcohol involved, there was other stuff going on, and that wasn't the time. But that conversation needs to happen. That conversation needs, needs to happen, that wasn't the appropriate time to happen. But looking back at it now, I wish I would have said, hey, look, call me tomorrow and I'll tell you about it. And, but that needs to.
I still think there's some misunderstanding about the local option. People still view it as a direct tax, and in some cases, it will be on your cable, electric bill. So it's not, that's not an optional selection if you're, which is one thing we should make sure we educate on, but. I, for me, I guess I want to thank you and Tom. I mean, this, I think last year when we talked about the budget, I think we're soon happy, we all talked about coming in level funded. And you, and you did that. I think, once again, we're still going to take heat for taxes going up because the expectation is that education taxes are going to go up. But I say it, meeting after meeting, we need to stress to the voter that we did our job. It's the school board now needs to step up and do their job. If we're talking funded, we did it. So.
Well, there was a discussion, we had a very brief discussion about that. I don't know if this is the time and place to have it, but about, is there going to be any potential blowback to a budget that we think coming from the school board isn't appropriate for what we're doing? And what, what should our response be to that? And, you know, maybe we need to think about that. Maybe we need to think about that.
You're saying with the conversation with the school board.
That's right, yeah. At a level where maybe a couple of our people go down there and talk to them.
By the way, thank you both for, for the effort to come in, what you did.
Great work, and nice work, guys.
Was there public comment?
They're thinking about it still.
Tom, do you comment?
If not, I'll make a motion to pass the budget.
No, this is Tom, it's good.
That's presented, second.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds.
I second it as well.
Third.
Third second. Any other questions for Dom or Tom? Hearing none, although in favor of approving the.
Adoption of the budget.
Or the adoption of the proposed budget? Say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, adoption passes. We'll move on to the review of town meeting day warning. I'd just like to back up for a second. Your imitation of Jeff Carr was somewhat.
It's terrible.
It was terrible, you're about, you're about 30 minutes.
Way too short.
Too short. So we need to work on it, we don't need to work on it, I thought you said that. So moving on to number eight, town meeting day warning.
All right, probably the biggest problem with this warning is I don't have the election clerk of treasurer on it. So.
I think Curry left that out on purpose.
Yeah.
Pretention to have to be audited.
So we'll add that in. Recall that according, we've got the calendar laid out, and right now, we're on track to do a teleconference around January 23rd and finalize the warning. So this is just giving you a sense of the flavor of it. So we'll get all the elected officers on board there. Those are the correct wards, correct?
Yeah.
The city budget we just talked about. And then we've got the community pool. Just read it. Shall the city of St. Albans issue general obligation bonds in the amount of 2.75 million for the purpose of financing the construction of a community pool, pool house, air-supported dome and associated site work, roadway construction, sidewalk construction, utility improvements and professional services to be located at the Hardak Recreation Facility. And for the payment thereof, pledge the credit of the city, in particular, the revenues generated from the local option tax.
So a question about that dome, do we have to put in there, or should we, that that's half of the amount?
Let me talk with Julie Ali. We don't have to, my inclination is problematic. Let me talk to Paul and see what he thinks.
How much should we do or we don't?
You know, anytime you try to contextualize it, you kind of run into troubles.
I'm just, I'm just afraid someone say, hey, we pass that, it's not being.
I can't, I can't tell the town does it.
The town doesn't, that's, that's what I'm afraid of.
I agree.
So, just a thought.
Well, I mean, we could put contingent of the town building.
Just some kind of word, word you have, I just don't, I don't know if we have to, we're. Just a thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anything that we would need to add to article two? Or do you think just having this meeting saying it's a zero percent increase?
I know, I had the same thought, it's too bad.
You can put the percentage.
Yeah.
This is the language you've always used.
Yeah.
We've never got into. I can, I can.
Not sure, I don't think we've ever put in a percentage increase or decrease.
Article four is neighborhood sidewalks. Read, shall the city of St. Albans issue general obligation bonds in the amount of 1.5 million for the purpose of financing the construction of neighborhood sidewalks and curves and associated site work, utility improvements and professional services? For the payment thereof, pledge the credit of the city, in particular, the revenues generated from the local option tax. And for the payment thereof, pledge the credit of the city, in particular, the revenues generated from the local option tax.
Does it make sense to put the the construction and completion of the neighborhood sidewalks? Thinking that it's the last piece of-
In five years, we'll have more sidewalks.
Not so long as you're on the council, I'm for sure. We can, yeah, we thought we should have put that in. Last phase, something like that. Next article is the charter amendment. Shall the city of St. Albans Charter be amended to provide as follows? The city council shall be authorized to levy a 1% taxable sales, meals, and alcoholic beverages and drinks.
Should we say to be known as a local option tax? Because otherwise, everybody's looking at the first, and Article 3, and Article 4, and saying, what is a local option tax? What's that all about? So I thought that would tell them that's basically what we're doing. Local option tax.
What if the article was renamed that?
Yeah, it could be charter amendment for a-
Yeah.
I don't get the way it is.
Yeah, nobody knows what a charter amendment is, but people understand it.
And Article 6 is Fonda. Same language. The flag, these are general obligation TIF bonds in the amount of 1 million for the purpose of financing environmental remediation, roadway construction, utility improvements, site work, professional services at the former Fonda Container Site on Laurinuton. And for the payment thereof, pledge the credit of the city, in particular, the revenue generated from the tax and construction. Valances required language.
Let's consider the fine print.
That's the fine print, yeah.
Dom, is the COA gonna get their construction done in time to add it to the TIF program there?
Anything that occurs for the next 15 years.
Okay, so, yeah, it doesn't have to be within that, if they do improvements in the next, it doesn't have to be within that five-year period, it can be any time during the 20-year.
It counts as increment for any time, but we can only issue debt based on it for the first 10. So we got about three years left, I think.
So if they do a big project, then we just collect increment on it?
Yeah.
And pay down our debt quicker?
Yeah.
Any question on any items, the articles being warned?
I think that's it.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix Article 5, we're gonna add the clerk and the treasurer. And did you guys actually come on to turn up your terms with the sidewalks? Are you gonna use that language completion?
Yeah, we'll try to get something in there. And we'll try to add something in for the community pool that makes it clear that the town needs to provide their vote.
Do we need to, do we need to have a special meeting to vote on this, or before the next city council meeting?
Yes. So usually, we just do it via, with a conference call.
Okay.
And then we have Kristen find you and get you the signed warning.
He has this gathered for the 23rd.
So we're thinking the 23rd.
Oh, yeah, I'm scheduled for the 23rd.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have a time on this one here?
Yeah, that's a Thursday. There's nothing magical about the 23rd. Does anyone?
I think no one does.
I'll send around an email, circulate it out of you. Just trying to not make you have to come in for another meeting, just do it by phone call.
Can you send out, Kristen, can you send out an email summarizing all of our dates and times? What we're expected to be, where and why. Thank you, Liz. Okay, anything else on the articles?
I think we're on to nine.
Number nine, yes.
Okay, I think we're on to number nine.
Who's running this?
Tough job, Chad, somebody's gonna do it.
So we talked about, do you want to give a quick overview of that, Dom?
Sure.
We're gonna get down to the current level. Unit 3 is what?
So Unit 3 is the Champlain Housing Trust building that is being built in a turnkey construction method by, development method by Snyder Construction. So the purchase and sale agreement is with us and Snyder. And Snyder then has a separate agreement with CHT to buy it. All with ours are what we've been discussing for months. Took $100,000 for land, and then an additional 1,450,000 for improvements.
So I'm just, I guess I was caught off guard by Snyder. I think, I remember that being early on, but never seen any discussion of that. I thought you probably moved away from Snyder. I'm just surprised to see that again.
That's probably on me and not keeping you guys-
Maybe I always write it as Vermont Housing or Champlain Housing.
I mean, Snyder's been kind of behind them for a while. You know, the, the original plan was to have DEW build everything, and achieve the economy as a scale. Champlain Housing Trust made it clear that to date, they've only done turnkey deals with Snyder. And that the only way this was gonna get done is if we brought in Snyder's apartment.
I just, I haven't seen the name at all in a while, anyway.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I think it's it really is, you know, he's he's their agents, you know, he's just, he's, you know, he's not gonna be involved long-term, so most of our negotiations have been with CHT.
We authorize the mayor to sign purchase and sale documents for Unit 3 at Congress and Main.
With no liability, of course, right?
Correct.
Any other comments on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And we're going on to Mayor's Report, a couple things I had quickly. Marty, I'm thinking, something if I'm wrong, but Public Works did not get called out on either holiday?
Which holidays? Christmas and New Year's? Christmas, they did not, Christmas Eve they did, and New Year's Eve they did.
New Year's Eve they did not.
They did, but just for about an hour and a half, they didn't get called out on Christmas and New Year's Day.
I was gonna be worried that they were gonna get solved.
Well, they made up for it this night.
Oh, they did?
With the ice storm and the water break.
Oh, yeah. And the water break?
Yesterday, yeah.
Was that, was that Forest Hill?
Yes.
Okay, I saw the trucks up there, I was gonna ask you.
Yeah, you should've stopped vowing.
Yeah. I saw those lights, and I just kept, I figured you had it under control. It's when you're not there that you stop it.
Once again, thank you, and pass our thank you on to Ben as well. We continue to get, I continue to get nothing but good reviews and compliments of how they handle themselves, so I appreciate that. The other one would be just a public thank you to all the volunteers who participated in Festival of Trees, Running of the Velves, tractor parade, and last night. You know, for a 30-day period, you had four major events that that were, you know, brought people to the city and to the restaurants. A lot of the restaurants talked about how busy they were over those time periods, and and all those activities are doing just what they're meant to do, is bring people to town. So I thought that was great, and that we were that we're able to host those, and thank you to the police, because there's a lot of time that goes in for the police as well, so.
Sure. Start down here, Tim.
What's the residential requirements for winter parking month party?
So it's, they'll get a warning, the winter parking ban is in effect December 1st. So they'll get a warning if they're parked, and then we'll put out a notice that we're gonna do snow removal. And so the snow removal is basically in the downtown district. If they're parked there, and they receive a warning, they'll get a ticket and a tow.
Oh, no, what about like up on Brandon Street, what's?
They'll just, as long as it's moved within 24 hours, where we can get back in and file that section, they'll be fine, otherwise, they'll get a ticket.
Okay, I'm still not clear. So I parked my car in the, on the roadway, and it snows that night. Paul can't get-
They'll go around you.
Has to go around me. Am I gonna get a ticket the next day?
No, but if it's there, if it's not moved within 24 hours, you will get a ticket.
Okay.
If you move it the next day, like the next morning, we'll go back through and clean those areas up, we're good.
The other one was when there is a garbage out on the street that people are leaving, and someone calls the city to complain about it, does the city actually go to pick that up?
We will notice the homeowner.
Yep.
And if it's not picked up within 24 hours, we'll pick it up, and we'll find them.
Okay. I thought that's what it was, I just wanted to make clear that sort of, good.
Mike?
I know that, Mr. Mayor, you and I had received an email about a complaint on Lincoln about somebody who had left their car parked for a few days, and the plowing, you know, it was keeping them from getting the plow to their satisfaction, so I don't know if that's-
I didn't see it, can you forward me that?
Yeah, I should've done that. Yeah, it was just a few days ago, and I, it fell off my radar, but Tim's comment reminded me of it, so forward, thanks, Marty, thanks. And yeah, thank you for responding on that light, the traffic signal, I don't know if you were able to-
Yeah, Tony's on it, we're just, our bucket truck is getting brakes put on it right now, so, in the next couple of days.
All right, great.
Kate?
I just wondered if you can give us a quick update on Congress and Maine, and how the work's going?
It's going great. The deal's heading up into the air. We're beginning to phase out of it, because a lot of the site work is done, or getting done. We're beginning to pass that on to Grant and his team. So with tonight's action, we're signing that PNS and scheduling that closing. And then the last item is negotiating the purchase and sale and development agreement for the market rate units. The podium is going up for those. Been an awful lot of conversations and work to try to finalize that project. Next meeting, I was Wednesday, I'll know more then. But, you know, we're still not there yet on that last piece for the market rate units. But we're close.
All soils have been transported to their final destination?
I love all of them, but slow report when we add them.
What was the question?
All soils have been transported to their final destination?
Yes, there's some that are down there now at PW that we're hoping to bring back. Not a lot, but if we can't bring it back there and use it, those will be held up too. But the site work, for the most part, like Dominique said, is done. Heath Wright finished his backgoing this weekend. So they've cleaned up everything, they have staged at Fonda. All the underground is done, except for the final connection, which we'll do in the spring.
Thank you.
Okay, any notes? Chad? You got nothing? We got Clemson 6, all those units?
Aye. That's recorded, man. Curry?
Just one question, when are the stickers going out for the trash cans as far as?
Where are we at on that, Kristen?
All of the haulers have picked their stickers up, except for one guy who hasn't responded at all. Everybody else has a sticker.
Is the one that hasn't responded a major one?
Yes.
The major one.
They've been sent a reminder letter in addition to their original application.
James?
Nothing except, you know, being retired, I don't get out in the community as much as I have been, but just kudos to the Public Works, we're keeping the, not only the streets, but the sidewalks very negotiable and safe and non-sloping, especially when you live on a smooth street like White, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else, anyone wanna remember anything? Okay, we've got a couple more things. Mr. Hawkins, would you like to?
Yeah, motion approve warrants 121319.
For a second?
Sure.
Second by James. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, none, motion passes?
Motion approve warrants 123119.
Chad, seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition, none, motion passes?
Motion approve minutes 12919.
Second by James, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chad, James, motion passes? Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Motion approve.
Second. Tom, thank for coming in.